Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It was good. I would like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is October 12th, 2021, and the time is 10:00 a.m. First of all, I want to welcome back Commissioner Warren. Good to see you again. So we're going to dive right in. We've got, although it's only two items on the agenda, I think both are going to be fairly full, so the presentations. So Tiffany, I will introduce you. Item one, Mayor's Racial and Ethnic Task Force Recommendations Prioritization. And why don't you start it out and introduce those who will be helping us this morning, and we'll get started.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to introduce the consultants who will be facilitating the work session this morning focused on the recommendations from the Mayor's Task Force for Racial and Ethnic Equality. Before I do that, I would just like to recognize the members of the task force who took time out of their schedule to attend the work session, recognizing that there is no public discussion, but that they wanted to be present to hear your priorities as well as any questions that the commissioners may have. If you could please stand, we have a co-chair, Michelle Diffenderfer, and sub-task force member and subcommittee co-chair, Mr. Bill Jacobson. Thank you for joining us. Joining us today to facilitate the discussion this morning is Mr. Don Edwards, who is the CEO and founder of Justice and Sustainability Associates, LLC. This consulting firm worked with the task force and the public and city staff to direct the task force activities starting in October of 2020. Melena Almeda is an associate with Justice and Sustainability Associates, and she will be taking notes on the discussion today. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Mr. Don Edwards to introduce the discussion.
Thank you very much, Tiffany, and good morning, Commissioners, Mayor James.
Go a bit closer to the mic.
How's that?
Yeah, much better, thank you.
Okay. First of all, let me thank you for the opportunity you gave my colleagues to work with you to help produce the process that has generated these recommendations. My role this morning is to basically address the process we designed and implemented, answer any questions you might have, but also to talk a little bit about the way we tried to structure the recommendations. That is really to give you an introduction to hearing the mayor's prioritizations, but it would set a context. And of course, I think many of you here, especially you Commissioners, are aware of the design we basically used. But I want to, for the sake of the record, make sure that we walk a little bit through it. So essentially, when Mayor James convened the task force, our charge, if you will, was to make it possible for it to achieve a certain number of outcomes. Number one, that it should engage people in West Palm Beach, but especially people who had not perhaps participated in civic engagement processes related to helping the city set its direction. So with that in mind, one of the other things we did was to try and use multiple means to engage people. Number one, creating a place where folks could come, sit with their residents, their neighbors, meet people who they did not know. We wanted to do that in a big room so folks would have the experience, and of course, we weren't able to be in a big room, so we created a virtual big room in which we broke people out and gave them an opportunity to interact. But we also wanted to create a number of what we would call downstream opportunities around subcommittees. And we spoke with each of you Commissioners about those subcommittees, and of course, the subcommittees had different people appointed from neighborhoods and various sectors of West Palm Beach, folks with both subject matter expertise as well as interest. And then, of course, what we wanted to do was make it possible for folks to also interact online, and so we created an interactive website and created other kinds of social media platforms to keep people informed and engaged. That's basically the design components, and I would say that it was pretty successful, though we could have always had more people. As you may know, we had very good participation in what we call the Action Summits, the two Action Summits that took place. We also had real participation in the monthly task force meetings and the subcommittee meetings that were scheduled. And so with that, the recommendations that you're going to hear or you've already seen came up really from your citizens and from your stakeholders here in West Palm Beach. We thought that that was very authentic and necessary, given the nature of the recommendations and the charge to the task force that Mayor James assigned it. So now we have come to the point where we and the mayor have not only produced the recommendations, 25 recommendations in five different categories, but we also now are presenting them to you with an idea of their prioritization. And the prioritization is intended both to reflect what you believe and the citizens agree is what needs to be done first and foremost within the context of realities like budget and timeline. And the mayor is going to talk more about that, but I wanted to provide an opportunity, if there were any questions or comments that you wanted to make and have documented by Melena, about the process itself. We have spoken with each of the Commissioners at various points. You gave a lot of time and attention, but I did want you to have an opportunity to say anything that we can do better or we can take as feedback and an opportunity to continue to serve your agenda here in West Palm Beach. So that's one of the things that I wanted to do before I kind of talk a little bit more and introduce Mayor James, is so he can begin to talk about the prioritization that he sees in these recommendations, so.
Commissioners, any questions, process-related? Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today and doing this work with us. My question was, if you could elaborate a little bit, you know, I know, being a part of the first Action Summit, it was extremely well-attended, officially for four hours, online on Zoom, you know? So it was very encouraging. Can you talk about what other actions we took, either at a subcommittee level or at a higher level, to really reach out and engage those who wouldn't typically come to the table on their own?
Yep, thank you for that good question. Of course, part of getting people to participate, to engage for us, is around the question of identifying interests. We have what we actually call a matrix, in which we think about people's level of information, level of interest, and then how do we use different techniques to engage them. And so we start with the recognition that most people do not spend their time thinking about policies necessarily or specific kind of civic recommendations. So there's an education and information component, to some extent, that is best done through making sure that they have people talking to them who they trust, not necessarily hearing from me or my colleagues, not even necessarily hearing from you, but also people like you who are living in communities with them as neighbors, but who are respected as intermediaries and informants. So that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure we incorporated into the Action Summits. It helps people to know that when they come out and participate in a Zoom for three or four hours, that they're actually going to see some faces they know and respect, and that they're going to have an opportunity to hear from people to a large extent who they have some trust built up with. And so that credibility was a result of both getting suggestions from people like yourselves, from the co-chairs, but also from folks like Tiffany, Ms. Hodge, David, and other staff who could say, okay, these are some of the folks whose faces you want to be in the number. I think the next thing was to really be very disciplined about adhering to transparency and reporting. And so we did a lot of documentation, but not just the kind of documentation where at some point in the future you find out what people were saying, but we wanted to give people some immediate feedback. And so, of course, part of what Melena has done and other staff have done is to document what people are telling us, but to make it available as quickly as possible so that folks have a record, but more importantly, can be a, can hold people like you and I accountable, that, you know, they can see their fingerprints, that the time they spent, they left some fingerprints on the final, on the products. I think the last thing I would say in order to talk about how we did it is, you know, the social media platform work is very important because there are different segments of the population, a lot of it is key to age. There are some people who get their information by coming to meetings like this, there are some people who get their information from Twitter and Facebook and online resources. In order to make sure we get everybody's attention and have an opportunity, give everyone an opportunity to be engaged, we wanted to use all the available tools. And so those were some of the components that went into our design and implementation. I think it also, I mean, to some extent, we wanted to kind of demonstrate what's the best practice so that folks could begin to see the West Palm Beach's local government approach as bringing the best tools to bear at all times. And so for us, the result was, I think, not only the engagement, the quantity of participation, but also the quality of participation. And of course, I would say that the quality of participation is what will carry you through to implementation. You want the excitement, you want the high expectations. And I think to some extent, without overselling, we did present enough different ways for people to see themselves in the photographs, so to speak, which you can build on. And so I hope that that begins to describe some of the detailed approach and work that we did.
Don, based upon your experience, and, you know, we were pushed into the virtual space because of COVID, although I thought, from my uneducated perspective, that that might actually have worked better, but I'd like to hear from you, who's been in this business for a while, how this virtual, how the way we did the Action Summits might have compared positives, negatives, strengths, weaknesses of the virtual approach versus the in-person approach.
Well, I don't think any of us would say that we are happy to have been forced into the position of having to do so much virtual work. On the other hand, I think you've made, you're making a point or you're suggesting that there is always a upside to every crisis. What the upside to this particular crisis created was an opportunity to actually have people who can utilize online tools engage and perhaps lower the bar for engagement. It's, we all know that people can participate a lot more easily and quickly from home without having to do some of the things that would be required if you came out into the public. I think there was a trade-off, obviously, because a good part of establishing, I don't want to say honesty, but a level of truth-telling and sharing is having people be in a place where they are amongst other folks who they know are listening and want to hear what is on people's minds and on their hearts. We did not necessarily have that in a virtual setting, but I think, to some extent, we were able to establish that all comments were not only welcome but being sought. I think we reinforced the idea that there's not any punishment that's going to be meted out for people saying what really is on their mind, what they think is important for them to contribute. So I wouldn't say that we would have preferred to do it this way. We would necessarily probably say that if we can get back to where there's a hybrid, where people have an opportunity to choose to be in person or to participate online, that's probably, that's probably in the future. But I think with the support of the Commissioners and the staff, we made the best of the situation, and I think that's represented in the continued numbers. The numbers never really tailed off, and I think that speaks to both the desire that bubbled up from the neighborhoods, but it also was a recognition that this was a particular opportunity that your initiative offered and that people should take advantage of it because, as they say, if you don't, if you don't play, you can't win. So I think that's how we, how we were able to make lemons out of lemonade.
Great, thank you. Other questions, Commissioners, process-oriented? Okay, we'll go to the next portion of this.
So I think the next portion, Mayor, is to just make sure that folks understand that of the 25 recommendations that were generated, we broke them out into the five categories, as you're aware, health, criminal justice, real estate and housing, education and workforce development, finance, banking, and business. And then we essentially took some steps with staff and the mayor to begin to set a prioritization, and if not a prioritization, to at least identify the recommendations that have some investment already having been initiated and made, so that when you think about the recommendations and how you're going to comment on them, please know that they are not all blank canvas recommendations. They are recommendations that while they came from the neighborhoods and stakeholders, they are, they have, some of them have more legs and have the ability to be translated into augmentation in the implementation phase. Some will require perhaps a different set of funding and prioritization authorizations. But the idea was to make it possible for Mayor James to talk about what he sees and how the next step could unfold. So this meeting is intended to, what we recommended to him, was that we use this meeting to answer all your questions, to take all your comments, and to schedule a second meeting in which you could spend more time, having had an opportunity in the interim, to look at not just the prioritization that he is going to make, to communicate, but also what's the implications of the prioritizations in terms of where investments are already on the books, are already reflected in the budget, and how do you begin to do the real work of deciding how to move from recommendations to actionable and implementable steps that government can, you know, execute on. So with that, that's really the big picture. Melena, again, is going to capture everything that comes out. I'm pretty sure that in the interim period, you will be meeting and talking, and the mayor will be meeting and talking. And then by the time the second meeting comes around, we would want to also support you in being able to reflect back to you what you've said, what you've, you know, expressed interest and concerns about, so that, you know, before, certainly before the year is over, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, that second meeting can be scheduled, and then that be an opportunity for a closer look at the implementation and the action steps, the designation of appropriate agencies and areas of local government that can carry out your recommendations. So Mayor James, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you to make your recommendations and talk about your prioritization, unless there's some questions.
Thank you, Don, and before we go any further, let me acknowledge who just walked in here, the other co-chair, Patrick Franklin. Patrick, please stand up. You weren't here to get all the warm accolades and applause from the packed room before because I know you were on a very tough assignment. You were on vacation in some Caribbean island somewhere, but that's okay. We're happy to see you, and thank you. Let me say publicly, thank you for all of your work with Michelle. This was not an easy task, but a job well done, so thank you. Commissioners, let me remind you of how we got here. In July of 2020, in the wake of, we're actually in the middle of tremendous energy on the streets in the form of demonstrations and protests, not only in our city, not only in our county, but literally throughout the world. Folks are marching for social justice, and I said, what could I do as the CEO of this city, what could we do as the legislative arm of this city to capture that energy, to respond to it? So I issued a executive order in July, and it basically was threefold mission to create the task force, and the task force was charged with the threefold mission. One was to take a long, hard look at the history of race relations in our city. Second was to look at best practices, and we identified the five areas, which you all probably know, but for the record, criminal justice, education and workforce development, finance, banking, and business, health care, and real estate and housing. Those five pillars, look at the history of our city in those areas. Then don't stop there because we knew that the history would not be a pretty picture, if we were honest with ourselves, but to move to identifying best practices from around the country as to how we could move forward as a community. And then the third was to make specific policy recommendations to this body. And that is how we got here today, and the task force has done a human's job. They reported out to us last week. All of you have seen that report, and now the real heavy lifting begins with us because we want to move from just policy recommendations to actual action. And that's not going to be easy, but I know that we are able to do it. The 25 recommendations all were very good. What is going to be tough for us is to move forward with specific priorities so that we can come out with a work plan that will be effective, that will lead to actual adaptation and adoption of specific policies. One reason why I wanted the task force as opposed to, is I was considering what action to take in response to the various demonstrations and protests. It would have just been easy to say, well, let's convene a few conversations and get people to talk about race, which some jurisdictions had done, but I felt that something more was necessary than just a few conversations, a few one-off conversations. And then as time passes, you know, people's memories fade, the energy fades. I wanted something that, a process that could lead to significant lasting change. And so here we are. Now, I'm going to present my idea of priorities, and then I've broken it down, and then I think the task force set forth a certain timeframe, short-term, medium-term, and long-term priorities, not priorities, policies. And so I thought, the way I approached it was to identify the top three, my top three, in each of those categories, and then I'll share those with you. So, but the, back to the next steps. This meeting and perhaps a portion of the next meeting, which will happen soon, is for the purpose of prioritization. Would love to say we're going to do all 25 of the policy recommendations, but let's, we need to be realistic as to what is accomplishable, so that we, if we bite off too much, we will not come up with anything that is, I think, of true merit. And so we do need to have a prioritization process. So I'm looking at that. The subsequent meeting will also discuss implementation, get your ideas on implementation strategies, so that we will come out of those two meetings with an idea of how we will move forward. We will also have to discuss budgeting. But those meetings won't be the only ones. As you know, we do have a strategic planning session coming up in next month, in November, and perhaps, not a requirement, perhaps, some of these policies may seep into your thinking as we're looking to come up with a strategic plan. So we'll have a few bites of the apple to try to digest these 25 recommendations, so they will get plenty of thought and discussion. But just to get the conversation started, I wanted to identify my top three priorities in each of these areas, and then we can certainly have a conversation going forward. So looking at the short-term recommendations, I would start with targeting programs toward financial education, financial literacy and entrepreneurship, with the focus on youth and young adults as being my number one in that particular category. I'm a strong believer that entrepreneurship is essential to closing the wealth gap in a community. Ingenuity, innovation, knows no skin color, it knows no zip code, and if we, as a community, could create in our community an environment in which entrepreneurialism is encouraged and facilitated, I think that would go a long way to creating a more just economic system. So I would put that, and I think it's doable, in fact, I'm working on that as part of my UNAM fellowship, our program, which you'll hear more of later, deals specifically with entrepreneurialism. But, you know, if we could create programs in the areas of financial education, financial literacy, and entrepreneurship. Number two, in short term, for me, would be creating mobile services and transit services for medical needs, to overcome the digital divide in communities and support areas with low accessibility to healthcare. You know, one thing that COVID did is it ripped the Band-Aid off of the existing areas of inequality, and certainly healthcare was one, and continues to be a significant area of inequality. The numbers are starting to come out, more people of color have died from COVID, and, you know, we have heard the statistics about when testing first came out, fewer people of color were getting tested. When the vaccine came out, fewer people of color, communities of color, were the last to get the vaccine, and now we're paying the cost. And it's supposed to be beyond just COVID. Because of the hospitals being filled out now, people are getting diagnosed later for cancer, and that's going to lead, and then communities of color are suffering that. So there is a significant need to address the inequalities in healthcare. I think as a short term... I think as a short-term, if we can begin by getting innovative and creative with these mobile services and even creating transit services to get people to healthcare. So that would be my number two. And then number three would be to invest resources to support education and capacity building of local organizations to advocate for tenant rights of vulnerable immigrant communities. We are seeing, as we as a community grow, affordable housing is a serious challenge for us. And there are certain communities that tend to be more renters than owners. And in certain communities, which are more vulnerable as renters, to bad practices of landlords. And the immigrant community is particularly vulnerable. So if we could work with local organizations to advocate for tenant rights for those communities that are forced to rent and are vulnerable to mistreatment. So that would be my number three. In the short-term area, I would point out, and this is an asterisk, that it is very important that, I believe, that we invest resources to prioritize code enforcement in the most abided areas. I think we're doing that already. And so that's why I didn't put it on my list of the top three, if you will. But as we are looking at some of these policy recommendations, it is important to highlight those areas in which I think the city is already performing. And I would say that that is an area in which the city is already doing a job. Could we improve? Absolutely, but we have the infrastructure in place for that. All right, so let's move on to midterm. And we'll get all these on paper and then certainly have the conversation as to what some of your thoughts are. So in midterm category, my number one priority would be to leverage business philanthropic and private partnerships and offer incentives to businesses to support workforce development and education programs. We have to continue to build a talent pipeline in our community in order for us to be a community of opportunity for all, which is my vision for West Palm Beach. This exciting growth that we're experiencing, we have to have all communities able to take advantage of the opportunities that are coming down the pike because the company's moving here. So workforce development is essential, in my view. And that's not an overnight thing, but we've gotta create an infrastructure. And it's gonna be, you know, I see this working with the private sector and being creative and innovative and offering incentives so that we can provide workforce development opportunities to those communities which are often left out and left behind. So that's number one in the midterm category for me. Number two for me is prioritizing greater investment in programs that help people, especially historically excluded populations, purchase and maintain homes. Homeownership is essential in terms of, again, bridging that wealth gap between certain communities, whether it's white communities on one hand and communities of color on the other hand. And they did have the statistics in the report. I encourage you to read those. In terms of the disparity, the shocking disparity of how few families and communities of color own their home versus those communities, the white community. It's a difficult disparity. And homeownership, real estate ownership, tends to be a linchpin for wealth creation. So if we are going to build wealth, create wealth in these communities of color, we've got to put residents of these communities in a position where they are owning their homes. So that is a key priority for me in the midterm recommendation. And then finally, number three for me is targeting strategies for hiring and maintaining a diverse team of police officers. You know, a lot of, certainly the impetus for this task force came out of the cries for social justice, certainly in law enforcement. And I don't forget, if you will, the genesis. That's probably the main pillar. And so we must continue to look for ways to ensure that we, West Palm, don't repeat the mistakes of other communities. And I know it begins with making sure we have a culturally diverse population of police officers. So that would be the number three strategy. Moving to long-term. Number one for me would be, if we could create a pilot program of crisis intervention to work with our police officers when they deal with mental health calls. It is something that is being experimented with in other communities, and I think it could be helpful here. You know, the body of work for our police officers is so heavy. You know, people will call 911 for anything. If someone is having a mental health epidemic, if there's a homeless person who may have fallen out on a bus bench, you know, 911 and the police are called. And so in order to have our police officers and the police departments function most effectively, I think we have to be cognizant that having law enforcement, gun-wielding police officers going to every incident may not be the most efficient way of addressing these services. And so I would like to see a pilot program created whereby we have mental health experts working and riding along with our police officers to deal with mental health issues. And would certainly like to explore that as an alternative to just a police going out and bad things possibly happen. In this long-term timeframe, my second priority is investing in the police department's field training program, again, to build a culture of community awareness and best practices in promoting racial and cultural sensitivity. It's gotta start with, as these new officers come out of the academy and get trained, an essential part of their development is what happens in the field. What kind of training do they receive in the field? And so if these new officers do not receive the proper training in the field as they move up in the organization, they're not gonna have the appropriate sensitivity. So we have to make sure that the underground training, as I call it, the field training is appropriate with sensitivity to cultural differences and understanding the best practices in racial and cultural sensitivities. That would be the number two. And then number three for me would be, and I don't know how to do it, but I think it's important, incentivizing offices of financial institutions to locate in communities of color. Again, with the goal of investing, those institutions investing or making loans and mortgages, increasing the percentage of homeownership. Don't know how to do it. I think it's important because if they're located in those neighborhoods, they will understand those neighborhoods and hopefully put their money and make the appropriate investments to strengthen those neighborhoods. So it's certainly, for me, a worthwhile objective and goal to incentivize banks, savings loan associations, the creation of community banks to be in communities of color. So those are my priorities. Certainly happy to engage in the conversation and hear your thoughts, commissioners. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for sharing these today. I guess I was just curious, are there some time parameters around the top priority, midterm and long range, so that we can all kind of gather around what that means? Is this a one-year, three-year, five-year plan? Or what is the idea behind the different categories? So what would be the goal of implementing a short-term as far as a timeframe and midterm and long-term?
I will defer to, I have my idea, but let me defer to the definitions that the task force may have had. Short-term, I think, was when the first year, right? I see heads nodding. Is it in the report somewhere? The debt?
I think that reflects the recommendations of the task force, one through five definitions. I think the thing, of course, is that it's the end of the links of what is already existent.
Yeah.
So that's one year in practice. So that's three years recognizes the new things in the budget as well. It's another one in the progress. We, you know, the law of the country, that comes in kind of as a quality.
Thank you. That makes sense. I just, we all have our own idea of what short, mid, and long-term look like, and I think it's helpful to get a level set of what those things are. And I think what you've explained makes a lot of sense. We're looking at short-range things like the community medic program that we're already implementing to some degree, to maybe enhance that degree and be able to take these things that there'll be a lighter lift, essentially, because they're already somewhat in the works. So that makes a lot of sense, and I think gives us a better place to kind of understand what the goals are. Thanks.
Other questions, comments? President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd also like to thank the task force for all the hard work that you all have done. And specifically, you know, my area interest is public safety. And I wanted to commend Mayor, you, and your administration for what I believe is a balanced approach with regard to your recommendations and your priorities. I believe it's a balanced approach to law enforcement reform recommendations. It's very important for us to have diversity in our police officers, education, training. These are all things that are essential to making sure that our police force is responsive to the needs of our citizens. So, thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
I'd just like to also say thank you very much, Mayor, for this initiative. I think that it's long overdue, and it's wonderful that we've gotten started. And I'm looking forward to all of the great things that we'll do and the great recommendations from the committee. I would love to see that we include the fire department as we talk about first responders and cultivating a diverse fire department and diversity training for all of our first responders, I think is imperative. And that we look at how the training and promotions are occurring as it relates to minorities in those areas.
I think that's a very good point. And, you know, as we move forward and have further discussions about implementation plan, we could certainly tweak these, but that's a very good one that we'll take into account. Absolutely. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you very much for this presentation today. And thank you, Mayor, for letting us know a little bit more about your priorities. I think one of my top priorities, as I was talking to JSA as well on our several calls, was implementing the mobile health. And I think it is something that we can implement immediately. The fire department has been working on a community medic program for a couple of years, and they actually have vans and medical equipment ready to go. They could, if we wanted to implement it immediately, they could be assigning people on an overtime basis until we had more staffing assigned. But it is something that we could implement immediately, and I know that there have been so many barriers to health in some neighborhoods because of either financial and insurance or because of lack of transportation. And so that would be one of my very top priorities. And so I'm very happy to hear that you also are recommending it. So thank you for all you're doing, and I look forward to the next steps.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. And looking at the various presentations that we've had on this, I think coming out of the committee and how this started, to your point, was out of civil unrest. And that civil unrest was primarily coming out of law enforcement and first responders. And so I think looking at the presentation that we had, one of the top committee recommendations was some sort of citizens' input board as it pertains to the police department and engagement of civilians. And I know we have a number of law enforcement priorities out to the five-year range. If there's a way to incorporate some interim step in some of the more immediate implementation, I think that, you know, certainly something I could support to try to address some of the committee findings and what the neighbors and residents at large had requested.
So you're adding that as an additional problem? I don't understand where you're...
I guess I would ask that we look at the short-term priorities and if it fits within one of your, I know you're doing top three priorities. If we could either add it in or have it supplement one of the three priorities that you have as short-term. I think that there is a lot of opportunity here to keep momentum going by some interim short-term wins, which is what I heard from what the committee work was, is what are some things we already have started that we can just amplify and get going right away? And that's what I hear out of your priorities, Mayor. So looking at the priorities that we have, I know majority of the law enforcement and first responder priorities fall into that third category of long-term range, understanding recruitment takes time and training takes time, and those types of things take time and resources. I guess just looking for something that's an interim goal that we can address that law enforcement piece.
So you say you want a short-term goal that incorporates the law enforcement?
Yes, Mayor.
The law enforcement or criminal justice category?
Yeah, I believe that one of the number-one suggestions out of the committee, as it was presented at the commission meeting, was for a citizen review board. I am not an expert in citizen review boards, but some sort of citizen input process. And again, I don't know the resources that it takes to roll that out or the level engagements. You know, I defer to you and the police chief. But I think that was one of the things that I have heard coming out of this. And I think the impetus of this committee being formed was out of civil unrest that originated out of a national law enforcement issue.
Okay, I may not hear you. Commissioner Paduzzi? President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming from the law enforcement perspective, the only thing that gives me concern is the creation of any board that's made up of citizens that will review law enforcement use of force. I think it's imperative, if you have such a board, if it has any teeth, to have people that understand the training that law enforcement officers go through and have the perspective of knowing what it's like to be on the other end of the barrel of a gun. I just think it's very dangerous to put citizens that don't have that perspective on a board that would review the actions of law enforcement. With regard to citizen input, 100% for that. We do have the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, which I was a member of as a board member prior to becoming an elected official. And you've got citizens on that, both with law enforcement and without law enforcement experience. And we need to utilize some of these boards that we already have in place. And I know that when I was a member of that board, and the perspective of some of us on that board was, is anyone hearing what we're doing or seeing what we're doing or hearing what we're saying? You know, people want to feel like they do have some input. And I think that if we just keep in mind that we already do have boards in place that provide for citizen input in the process. Thank you.
And again, we can, as we begin exploring implementation strategies, can certainly continue that conversation. I think what needs to be weaved into it is, and I didn't go into it in terms of setting my priorities, is what is already being done. And so as we begin to discuss implementation, we'll probably get, and I think one of the takeaways from this will be, as we understand the direction which we're headed, is to make sure that we present to you all information on what departments are already doing in some of these areas. Again, so that we're not reinventing the wheel, but we are also taking into full account work that is already being done, seeing how that could be continued, weaved into what our implementation strategy may be. our implementation strategy may be going forward. So, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, President Paduzzi and Commissioner Shaw for your comments. And I would just like to add that I believe that the Citizens Review Committee was a recommendation from the task force, from the racial equity task force. So I think that it merits that we, that we give it strong consideration because the community cried out for that because there was a trust issue, not necessarily one that they saw directly, maybe, or maybe not, but one that was perceived nationwide. So I think that our citizens have spoken and said that they want to be included, and it's, it's simply important that we hear them. And I would also, in this conversation, like to know what steps we've already taken as it relates to racial equity training and if that's something that can be included in our short-term goals.
Okay. So, so let's make sure, and I'm glad we're having this conversation. So we're going to capture the questions that you all have and make sure that we have information responding to those on or before the next meeting. I mean, I don't think it has to wait so that we could get you whatever that information is prior to the next meeting. So when we go into the next meeting, it could be a very informed discussion. So she's going to capture that. Any other questions or areas of interest that you want more information on? All right. Well, this is a start, and I think it's a very good start. So I'm going to sit down and work with administration, city administrator, on, on the date of the next meeting, but it will be with, within a few weeks. It's not going to be months, that's for sure. Because I want to maintain this momentum. I think that the task force put in a lot of wonderful work, and I don't want them to think that we don't hear them, we don't acknowledge their time and effort. And so we want to maintain the momentum that has been initiated by their work, and, and we will keep taking the next steps. So we'll get that next meeting set up. We are keeping account of the questions and concerns that were raised so we can make sure we get that information back to you. We'll also look at what is going on with some departments of the city in certain of these areas so that you have that information available. Okay? Anything else? Well, thank you, Don. Thank you for you, to you and your team for helping us kind of focus our discussion for today. Thank you for helping work with, all the work you did with the task force. I do not believe that the quality of the work product would have been as high without the, the efforts of your team. And again, thank you to Michelle, thank you to Patrick for co-chairing the task force and getting us to where we are today. There's still work to be done, but we have come a long way. And if you think about it, you probably don't hear much anymore about demonstrations, protests about civil unrest. It doesn't mean the problem has gone away, okay? It just means that attention has been turned elsewhere. And that's exactly why I wanted to create the task force, as opposed to just having some conversations and reacting to the energy of the moment. Because by having the task force, making these specific policy recommendations, it keeps the work going on. And that is what I had in mind when I created the task force. And so we are going to continue to do the work. You all have passed the baton on to us as the elected officials, the policymakers, and so we will continue to do the work. Okay? Okay, so this portion is, is done for now, and we'll turn to another, the next item on the agenda. So, thank you. And that item is redistricting proposals. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, Commissioners.
No, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, Rick Green, Development Services Director. Let me quickly walk you through an agenda of what we're proposing to discuss today. We'll provide a little background on the census and the process that we are going through now as Alex sets this up. We'll discuss the 2020 U.S. Census results for West Palm Beach. We'll talk about our strategy for reapportionment and the recommendation that we're going to make to the City Commission. I'll then turn it over to Alex, who was the lead planner on this project. We work very closely. And we'll talk about census terminology, and then we'll discuss the five map drafts that we prepared and get into a little bit more detail on our thinking, and then certainly discuss our recommendation and answer any questions you may have. So just a little background, the city charter requires that we amend our commission district boundaries every 10 years upon the receipt of the Florida state and federal census numbers. The city commission shall adopt an ordinance within six months of the date of the official publication of that number, which we received on August 12th. So we have until February, but obviously we want to, with an upcoming election, we want to address this as quickly as we can. And then, again, we don't want to have any impact on the March election. So the charter specifically requires that we amend our boundaries so each of the five districts have nearly equal population. Districts must be logical and compact and then promote fair representation. So when you look at the population increase from 2010 to 2020, this is the population, the net population increase by district. So you see the average growth was about 3,500. If you took it, the total number divided by five, a 17 and 1/2% growth, which was a pretty significant increase. You see District 5 to the south had a 3 and 1/2% increase. District 2 had a 13.3% increase. District 1 had a 19.6%, increase. District 4 had a 20.7% district percent increase. And then downtown District 3 had the greatest increase at 29.9%. So looking at the numbers, you see in 2010, we had just under 100,000 persons. That increased to 117,415. And I will say that our planning staff was very pleased with that number. It was a pretty significant increase. That population of 99,900 in 2010 was subsequently changed to just over 100,000 when we noticed the discrepancy with the results that the U.S. Census did adjust. So we're looking at a total increase of about 17,500. When you divide that by the five commission districts, we are looking at a target per district of approximately 23,483 persons. So that was the goal that we had in mind as we began this exercise. So again, looking at District 1, you had a 5.1% increase. I'm sorry. The, the population increase based on the 2020 numbers are 5.1% over that average per district of 5.1. District 2 was just slightly under that at 3%. District 3 downtown had a significant increase. They're 13% over that average. District 4 basically kept up with the growth. So there was very negligible change, if you will, in our target and, and the population growth that was experienced in that district. And then lastly, District 5, there was a 14% drop based on that average per district.
So, so Rick, just so I understand, the target for each is 23,483, correct?
Correct.
All right, so looking at the numbers, District 1 was 5.1% above that target?
Correct. So you see the, the population number here, Mayor, you see the 24,681. That's what the 2020 census results are under the existing commission districts.
Okay.
That represents a slight increase over and above. It's a 1,200-person increase above our target of 23,483.
So the blue numbers underneath the actual population count represent the delta?
Correct.
Between the actual population and the target?
Absolutely right. Yeah, I'm sorry to didn't clarify that.
No, it's okay. I'm slow, so it takes me a while to get it.
So when you look at the range of the low and the high, you see that the big discrepancies between District 3 and District 5, there's a 27.35% discrepancy. So our goal is to get that discrepancy to less than 8%. The last two census numbers, we targeted approximately 7 to 8%. So that's what we, we targeted as we began this exercise. So it goes without saying that staff took into account all of the commissioners' current addresses. We didn't want to move them out of a, a district in which they reside today. So we had people track your homes down. We looked inside, made sure you were there, but these are the correct addresses. And then, of course, we did not want to alter any neighborhood associations or historic districts. So we didn't want to bifurcate a neighborhood association, so we kept that in mind, which became a little bit of a challenge when we talk about District 5, and we'll get into that in, in more detail. So the immediate observations was, number one, District 4 kept up with the population growth. The delta was less than 1% based on our target. So very little change there. The loss in District 5 to the south is almost offset by the growth in District 3. So you'll see in a lot of the scenarios, you see this, this finger or this appendage that extends down currently in District 3. So what Alex and I did, we took this endpoint and we just kept moving it north to see if we can get Districts 3 and 5 to balance. So you'll see that. And again, that's, that's the, the extension, if you will, that we targeted right off the bat on all of the scenarios that we looked at. And then lastly, we wanted to provide the commission with alternatives. So we did five separate alternatives, and that involved manipulating a lot of the, the boundaries, not a lot, but some of the boundaries of both District 1 and 2 to try to give you a different alternative, if you will. So what you see here is a summary of the five options, the population based on the 2020 numbers, as well as the percentage change. The numbers that are reflected in red signify there was no change based on the existing commission districts. So District 4, Commissioner Paduzzi's district, in each of the five options, we did not change his boundary whatsoever. So all of this red you see here, his district remains intact, so we're not proposing that it changed based on what it is today. District 2, three of the scenarios involve keeping the district exactly as it is today. Two of them involve the change. And then in some cases where you see the different colors, like the yellow in District 1, four of the five scenarios, the boundaries were the same, and Alex is going to go into this in more detail. District 2, the other options, other than keeping three of the options the same, the other options had the same change. And then in District 3, you had two of the options had one number, and then you had varying on the others. And then same with District 5. Three of the five options involved one boundary, and then two of the five options involved another boundary. So what we'll do is I'll have Alex walk through the, the different options now. I'll come back at the end, and then, as Alex will explain, you know, 1 and 2 are very similar, 3 and 4 are similar, and then we basically pared it down and eliminated it, and we'll come back to you with a recommendation at the end. Alex? Either way.
Alex Hansen. First, I just want to identify some basic census terminology for everybody's clarity. There's three primary census geographic entities that are, that are basically the building blocks of how we develop the options that are in front of you. The smallest block is the census block. We have a graphic there on the left. The census block is the smallest geographic entity. The census block can contain anywhere from zero to over 1,000 residents. For the city of West Palm Beach, there's over 1,500 census blocks that, that are fully contained within the city limits. The other two entities that we have are census block groups. Census block groups are comprised of several census blocks. In the case of West Palm Beach, we have 89 census block groups that are either fully contained or partially contained within the city limits. What, what I mean by this is there are some census block groups that are actually, a portion of it is within the city limits and another portion is outside of the city limits. And then we have the largest geographic entity, which is the census tract. Census tract is composed of several census block groups. The case of West Palm Beach, we have 39 census tracts, either fully or partially contained within the city limits.
Alex, before you go off, how is the census block itself defined? Is that a geographic definition? Because it says there that a census block can contain zero to 100, to 1,000 people. I mean, a census block with zero people?
Yeah, sometimes you have some geographical features that are contained or are fully included within a census block.
So what makes a, what makes an area a census block?
It depends. We have, and we'll have some maps later on, but maybe they don't get into the block detail. But in the eastern part of the city, we have, the census blocks typically match what would be considered a city block.
Oh, okay.
But as you get in other parts of the city, we have, for example, lakes. Lake Mangonia is composed of a census block. Water catchment area, we have a few census blocks that are, that are, basically contain the census, I'm sorry, the water catchment area. So those are some of the ones that include zero residents. We also have, again, blocks that are, that are comprised of areas that are non-residential. So those also may be industrial areas, commercial areas, where there's no residential units, but however, they constitute a census block.
Do those definitions change from census period to census period? Did you get a list of those from the Census, U.S. Department of Census?
We, we do. We do. Again, this is a map. This, this map actually doesn't get into the census block. It just shows the census tracts in the city of West Palm Beach. So these are those 39 census tracts that I mentioned. And again, within that, each, each of those tracts, we have on average somewhere between 16 and 17 blocks. But some of them, you even have, again, I'm right, I'm lighting it here, this is the water catchment area, which is a census tract. So again, this shows all of the census tracts within the city limits. And we have an example, this is out west, in which you have actually a census tract that is composed of three census block groups. This is, I believe, in the Ibis area, the one that we're showing you. And these are the census block groups that constitute that census tract. And again, then we have census blocks, multiple census blocks that are formed a census block group. Why this is critical is because these are basically the pieces, these are the Lego pieces that we were given in order to assemble these districts. What I want to show in this is that some of those lines have already drawn for us. So we just had to choose which are these pieces, which are these lines we were going to use in order to constitute these districts. We didn't have full discretion, we didn't have a full, a blank canvas that we could use where you could just draw lines at our pleasure in order to delineate the boundaries between one district and, and the other one. Again, also, we, the city procure a software, it's a redistricting software that we used for this exercise. It was very helpful. Again, it showed the different census tracts, census block groups, census blocks, and it gave us the population for those. And so that's how we started basically assemble, assembling those, those pieces. These are some examples, again, how, how this whole exercise took place. Rick mentioned this map. It looked a little bit different when he initially showed it, but these are the, these are today's census, I'm sorry, commission districts showing the 2020 census population. And again, it showed the, the total number of residents based on the 2020 census, as well as the difference with regards to that target rate of 23,500, almost 23,500. This is option one. The, the, again, we're going to provide you with five options. Option one is one of the, what we call one of the most compact options. What I show, what I'm showing on the left with those four numbers there is the four primary areas where sense, where option one diverges from today's district. So as Rick mentioned, Area 1, which is this appendix or appendage that we have extending from downtown, south, along the coastal areas. So option one basically moves that area from District 3 into District 1. So it's now, I'm sorry, to District 5. So this is now part of District 5 in this proposal. Then the second... Then the second area that diverged is on the, just south of downtown. So the main difference here is we ran the line along Okeechobee Boulevard, then we extended it along Parker Avenue and then Belvedere area. So this, again, this area moved from District Five to District Three in this option, along, again, Okeechobee Boulevard, Parker Avenue, and Belvedere. Then the Area Three that we have identified here is what is called Palm Beach Lakes South. So in this option, we moved Palm Beach Lakes South from District Two to District Three. And then the fourth area of change here is the area around Land of the Presidents, Presidential States, some of the residential units just north of the Outlet Mall. Today, the section north of Palm Beach Lakes and west of Congress is part of District Two. And then Presidential States, Land of the Presidents is split between District One and District Three. In this particular option, that entire area would be part of District Two. So again, the reason why we included this option, we think is fairly compact. Each district is quite compact. And again, these are some of the population results as a result of that. As Rick indicated earlier, there's no change in population for District Four, because there's no changes to the boundaries of District Four. So that is why this is highlighted in yellow. The other four districts change, but the deviation ranges from minus 3.18% to plus 3.41%. So the deviation between the largest district and the smallest district is 6.59%. So it is within that 7%, 8% target that we established. Option Two is fairly similar to Option One. It's also a very compact option. Again, Area One is the same. The changes on what I identified as Area One are the same as Option One. The changes on Area Three and Four are the same as Option One. So just what I described earlier. The main difference between, or the only really difference between Option Two and Option One is this area here, south of downtown. So in Option One, the line was basically Okeechobee Boulevard. The boundary between District Three and District Five was Okeechobee Boulevard, then Parker Avenue, and then Belvedere. In this case, we basically followed the Stop Canal as the dividing line between Districts Three and Five. So the Jefferson Terminal District and some of the areas south of Okeechobee and west of the Stop Canal will be part of District Three, but the areas east of the Stop Canal will remain in District Five. Also, the other difference is right here in this area, just south of Okeechobee Boulevard. It's difficult to see at this scale, but in the other, the map one, the line was Okeechobee Boulevard. So any developments south of Okeechobee were in District Five. Any developments north of Okeechobee were in District Three. In here, we're following the limits of the downtown master plan area. So City Place, South Tower, and some of the townhomes that are immediately south of the Convention Center would be part of District Three. Those developments are within the boundaries of the downtown master plan, so we wanted to have a district that fully included the boundaries of the downtown master plan, and this accomplishes that. Option Three is different from Options One and Two. Again, in this option, and I want to say, these Options Three and Four are what I would call more of the continuity options. Two of the districts remain unchanged in this case. Again, District Four, no changes from today's boundaries. In this instance, District Four also retained, I'm sorry, District Two also retains the same boundaries as we have today. That's why they're highlighted in yellow. In the case of Districts Three and Five on the south end, again, that we have still that appendage that is now part of District Five in this option. This area that I mentioned, south of Okeechobee Boulevard, it remains or is the same as I just described in District Two. So we're retaining the boundaries of the downtown master plan in this option here. What changes, again, in this option, this area Palm Beach Lakes South continues as part of District Two, which is different from Options One and Two. What is a little bit different here is the area north of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard and east of I-95. While in Options One and Two, that was part of District Two, in this option, those areas, Land of the Presidents, Presidential States, would be part of District Three. So that is a difference from Options One and Two, and that is a difference from today's districts, in which, again, Land of the Presidents and Presidential States are divided between District Three and District Five. This option also remains within that range of less than 7%, less than 8%. So this is 6.29%, the range between the largest district and the smallest district. Option Four is fairly similar to Option Three. Again, Districts Two and Four remain unchanged from today's boundaries. The area highlighted here at the top of Presidential States, Land of the Presidents will still be in District Three in this option, consistent with, again, Option Three. The appendage on the south end of South Flagler will also be moved to District Five. This option does go back to the line, the dividing line between District Three and District Five being Okeechobee Boulevard, then Parker Avenue, and then Belvedere, as opposed to the Stop Canal. So really, the only difference between Option Three and Option Four is how we treat the boundaries between, or the limit between District Three and District Five. While in Option Three, we had the line following the limits of downtown, in this one is Okeechobee Boulevard, Parker Avenue, and then Belvedere. It is, again, within the range, 6.31, the deviation between the largest district and the smallest district. Then we have final option, Option Five. Area One doesn't change. Area Two here, we're following the limits of downtown. So in that case, it's similar to Options Two and Three, in that it's following this line here, consistent with the boundaries of downtown. The big difference between Option Five and all the other options that I presented before is what happens in the, kind of, the north end of the city. So Area Three here, which in some of the options was fully within District Two, that is Options One and Two, in Options Three and Four, this was fully within the boundaries of District Five. In this instance, Land of the Presidents and Presidential States would be fully contained within the limits of District One. But then, this would, just making this change without any other change, would mean that District One would be too large. So we had, something had to give up as far as the limits of District One and District Three. So in this other option, we did expand the limits of District Three along the coastal area. So you have this area here, which runs along the FEC railroad tracks, then 23rd Street to Dixie Highway, and then east of Dixie Highway, it goes north to 26th Street. So this area here, now, as part of this option, and this is the only option in which we are included in as part of District Three. But again, in return, District One would now be fully containing Land of the Presidents and Presidential States. Again, these are the five options that we are proposing. All of them are within the range that we set up. Another criteria that we looked at has to do with fair representation, which is one of the directives of the city charter. This table is basically showing the minority representation by district for all five options. I want to mention, city's population is minority-majority. That means the majority of the population is constituted by racial/ethnic minorities. So about 60% of the city's population is constituted by either Hispanics, blacks of African-Americans, or individuals of other races or other ethnicities. In this instance, in the five options that we're proposing, four of the districts would have majority-minority population. The only one where a percentage of the rest of the district is constituted is, I'm sorry, where a minority minorities constitute less than 50% of the district is District Four, in which is 49.75%. So basically, half of the districts.
How does that compare to what's going on there? How many of the districts currently? I don't know if you have that information available, or minority-majority?
Uh...
Currently.
Go back to that slide.
Well, today, four of the districts...
I have it. Hold on. Let's just call him right here.
So this is with today's districts, again, not making, if we were not to make any changes.
Right, right, right.
So four of the districts have populations that are majority-minority. The only district that where minorities constitute less than 50% of the population is District Four, because we're not changing the limits of District Four. That will remain a constant.
So again, currently, four of the districts have majority-minority, and under all of the proposed maps, four of the districts will be majority-minority.
Correct. So it doesn't change from today's condition.
Okay.
Any of the options that we're proposing. There's a range from the mid-50s to the mid-70s, but again, in none of the options, that would change from today's condition. Again, this is the summary.
I'll pick it back up from here. So Mayor, to answer your question, the percentages today are reflected here in this column under the five districts.
The blue column, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
So again, this is the summary, and the important point to note is of the five options, again, every one is well under 7%. Again, we were targeting 7 or 8%. So what we'll do now is just staff recommendation based on, if you will, a process of elimination. So as Alex mentioned, Options One and Two were very similar, given the configuration down here, and then our desire to follow the downtown master plan and our transportation concurrency exception area. Of these two options, we would recommend Option Two. Then we looked at Options Three and Four. Again, they were very similar. And again, based on that same thinking, the configuration here along the downtown master plan of the two options, we chose Option Three. Then we compared those two, are favored from Option One and Two, which was Two, and then are favored from Option Three and Four, which was Three, and we looked at both of those. And again, our recommendation would be Option Three. Okay. Option Three in that case, again, it takes Palm Beach Lakes back into District Two, where it is today, and then you still follow the downtown master plan boundary. So where we are right now is a recommendation of either Option Three or Option Five. Both of them, again, very low, 6.29 and 6.21% deviation. In Option Five, Districts Two and Four do not change at all, and the same with Option Three. So we're really talking about changes, potential changes, to Districts One, Three, and Five. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions. I'll leave these maps up, and we have them both up on there.
Okay. So the first question is, when do you need a decision? Is this going to be on an agenda, a city commission agenda, soon, Madam City Attorney?
Well, ultimately, the decision will go by ordinance to a commission meeting. What we would like to do, if we were to make a selection before the end of, or the beginning of the qualifying period, would be have the selections before the commission for the last October meeting and the first November meeting. I'm not sure what staff thinks, whether or not that's likelihood of being able to be done, but this is the start discussion of how to go forward.
Okay.
I want to just say, Mayor, I wasn't here. I believe Alex was here for the last census update and redistricting that we did. But the last ordinance, I believe, was approximately about 95 pages. We have to take all of the block information and include it in the ordinance. So obviously, we're going to do a very thorough and careful check. So that's something we certainly will do, and we'll do it as quickly as we can. It's just something that cannot happen overnight, given the volume.
No, no, I understand. I just wanted to know what and when you needed a decision of this body. But your recommendation is either Three or Five, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, and thank you for sending us these maps so that we could review them over the weekend. I think, you know, based on, obviously, what we're looking at, the most changes are going to happen in my district. And I think, just from the way that we are working as commissioners, to me, it has always made a little bit more sense that the area that is sort of being eliminated now to go to Commissioner Lambert's area, those issues are very similar to issues she has in her area, you know, flooding on Flagler and Flagler Drive issues. And so it seems like it makes more sense that that area will be moved to her district. But I think for the same reasons, when I look at option number five, I think, you know, obviously, I don't know what others think or what Commissioner Sho thinks, but it seems to me that bringing District Three into Northwood doesn't make the most amount of sense, in that it seems easier to have one commissioner, you know, working on the Northwood issues. So I, you know, when I was going through all the maps, I thought Option Three seemed the most, made the most sense, that I would be keeping the downtown master plan and also in the areas around, around the Outlet Mall, the areas that are already in District Three. I'm just expanding them a little bit, and it seems to take, be the least, I guess, painless scenario. So I don't know. If you're asking me, I think Option Three seems to make the most amount of sense, and so I appreciate that that is one of your top two, but I'll just defer to hearing what others think.
Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to staff for putting in the time. Coming up with five options is not easy, and getting it narrowed down to these two, I think, is prudent. Looking at the options, I think Option Three achieves a lot of the goals that we have. Uniting the Land of the Presidents is key. You know, the way it's divided now and the issues that occur in the Land of the Presidents, which are mostly condos, we do have a couple of single-family homes, et cetera, fall within the same needs that happen in the downtown area. Option Five is a little problematic for me, because it does divide the district at the east side and basically carves out a big, a big piece of neighbors that have the same concerns, as well as it segments the CRA into two separate districts. So looking at these two options, and really looking at all five options, I think Option Three achieves a lot of very important city goals. Uniting the south end into one parcel, I think, is a really, really good goal, but it creates, to me, the most unity when we look at people and when we look at the needs of our various districts, which are across the board, you know, from district to district. But when we're looking at segmenting those districts, I think Option Three puts the needs of our residents into some categorized areas, so I'd be in favor of that option as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Does that give you enough guidance? Or the word I got, and I didn't breach any sunshine, but the word I got from Commissioner Lambert is that she also preferred, she preferred Two, Three, or Five. So it sounds like if there's a push for Three, she could live with Three. So you may have, not that we're voting, but you may have three proponents of Option Three. President Paduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm good with Option Three. Also, it seems to make the most sense, and I agree with the comments of my colleagues.
All right. So there's Four. Okay. Any other questions? All right. So what are the next steps, then?
Were you going to make a comment, Alex, or?
No. It's fine. I just want to clarify, in Option Five, the Northwood area will still remain as part of District One, but just to Commissioner Fox's comment, but that's not an issue. of District One, but just to Commissioner Fox's comment, but it's, that's not an issue. I, I just want to also get direction from the commission. Next step would be then to bring this item for city commission approval through an ordinance, or would there be some other meeting before coming back to city commission? Public meeting, getting public input, or is next just the adoption of the ordinance?
What are, what are your druthers, commissioners? I think we could just go straight to ordinance, but I'm listening to.
Agreed.
Okay.
So we'll begin, we'll begin preparation of the ordinance and all the backup data that, that goes with that, and then we'll have.
Looks like there's consensus to move to, straight to the ordinance. And that'll save us on time, too, because, Madam City Attorney, you might want to remind us, some of the deadlines we're under. Qualifying begins when?
It's November the second.
Yeah, so we don't have a lot of time to play with here. And we're already at October 12th, so. And so if it came to ordinance, when would be the, the meeting? What, what would be the first reading?
Well, it depends on how long it's going to take staff to be able to put together all of those census blocks they talked about to create the data that goes, that gets attached to your ordinance.
I think realistically, we can try for, I believe, November 1st, have the first reading.
First reading?
First reading on November 1st, because the next city commission meeting is next Monday, the 18th. And honestly, I do not believe that we can have all the data ready by next Monday, and the meeting after that would be November the 1st.
All right, so, and if qualifying begins on November 2nd, but it doesn't end until, what, the 16th?
November 23rd is the date I have, Hazel. Is that correct? No?
When is it end?
November 16th.
November 16th. All right, so it'll be tight, but, okay, Commissioner Shoef and then President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious on specifically those districts that will be changing districts. Is it our policy, and I know this is a once every 10 years, do we notify the, the changed districts?
I'm sorry.
Do we, do we notify the districts, for instance, the, the land of the presidents? If we, if we, we end in Option Three, are we going to notify anyone north in Palm Beach Lakes there that their district will be changing? Is that our policy?
I'm not aware of any notification to specific residents. What I believe has happened in the past, there were some public meetings in which the options were presented to the public, and then feedback was received from the public, but there was no specific notification. We would have to notify thousands and thousands of residents.
And you do have some notification, because it's an ordinance, and there's publication of the ordinance required in, in the newspaper of the changes that are occurring.
That was going to be my next question, just so that we are notifying the public in some way. I think in general, you know, the public is aware nationally. I mean, I think there's three incumbents in two positions now being considered in West Virginia as redistricting happens, so I think it's a national topic. But just so that we're notifying our residents through, I mean, I know the meeting will be noticed, the ordinance will be noticed in, in typical fashion, but I think it behooves us to just make sure that our residents know, and I think the newspaper's a good way to do that.
And something that we didn't mention, but probably is, is good to remind the public, is that we have citywide elections. So any changes that are proposed here will not affect, will not have an electoral impact. So regardless of where a city of West Palm Beach resident resides, they can still vote for all five city commission seats. So I think that is, that is just important to remind the public, that what we are deciding today should not have any, any impact on, on the outcome of city commission elections.
And may I, may I make a comment, Mr. Mayor? Um, just to follow up on what, um.
Absolutely. Yes, you can make a comment.
Just to follow up on what Alex said as far as the election, if it's going to be changed as a citywide, like he said, it will not affect how the voters vote in this election. However, just a caveat, the supervision election is not changing any polling places or any type of voting thing till after the first of the year. So, like I said, although it's a citywide election, the electors of the city will not be getting new cards based on the district changes, because she still has to go through a process, a state process herself before she can reallocate polling locations. So polling locations will not change for the upcoming election.
Okay. President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we were to vote on this ordinance, November 1st, would it immediately go into effect, then, in consideration of the fact that, that the qualification period starts immediately?
No, your ordinance is not effective until the second reading.
Second reading.
Normally, depending on how the language is written, 10 days following the second reading, unless we legislate otherwise. So we can legislate that it's effective on the date of the passage or adoption of the second reading, but not before.
So the ordinance would naturally be in place until after the qualification period was, was definitely running? So it could affect our residents' ability to qualify in a, in a given, for a given seat on this stage?
Well, yes, it could, but I think if anybody is astute, they could probably see what was approved the first reading, and, you know, it, it's probably 95, 98% chance that that's going to be approved the second reading, and see where they, they locate. By the way, just for the record, we could think all of this, we could think Tallahassee followed this rushing. It used to be qualification didn't end until January, but Tallahassee, the state legislature in their infinite wisdom, moved qualification back until November. So that's why we're kind of in this jam, this, this, this tight time jam. So your point's well taken, Mr. President, that technically, we will not have approved the final boundaries of the district until well into qualification. But I don't see any way around that, unfortunately. And it shouldn't hurt anyone. I mean, listen, November 1st, I'm sorry, November 2nd, whatever that meeting is, we'll, we'll, we'll vote on the first, we'll do first reading, and they could look at the boundaries then and kind of figure out where they are, if they're looking to, to jump in and, and make an educated guess that it's going to be the same at second reading. Commissioner Warren.
Does this take into consideration the current development projects that are currently underway? Because when I look at this, if, if we're, if we won't redistrict again, or we don't anticipate redistricting again for 10 years, could this be a grossly disproportionate number by the time we have the next census?
You mean, will the, will the populations in each district change? Probably, but, but, but we don't, we can't anticipate that.
My question is, has that been taken into consideration based on the development projects that we already know are underway?
Commissioner, it cannot. We have to use the census numbers that were provided to us very recently in August, based on the population that they counted last year. So while there will be growth, and that's why, while you get the disparity after 10 years, we can't anticipate or account for projected growth that may take place. The hope in an ideal world is it's, it's, it's consistent across all five districts, and then when we do this again in another 10 years, you won't see as much of a disparity. But, but to be honest with you, the disparity that we witnessed with that growth of 17,000 persons wasn't that great this year compared to other, other times we've done this. But to answer your question, no, we cannot anticipate the growth that's coming.
And this provides you with an image of the city's conditions as of April 1st of 2020. So that is when the census data was collected. So the numbers that we just showed to you, citywide, and then for each specific district, where was the population count then, April 1st? So it's now, what, 18 months, over 18 months? But that is the data that we have to use. That is the only data that is available to us.
Any other questions? Okay, well, I think you kind of know the consensus of this body. Put together the information required for the ordinance, and we'll get the, that scheduled before November 2nd, it is?
First.
First, first, first. Okay. All right, I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Commissioners, you have anything under, for the good of the body? Okay, hearing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much. Very productive. You.